Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, October 2nd, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The following item was advertised for this meeting but will not be heard today. The Unified Land Development Code Text Amendment, ULDC-AM-12-08, which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11, Section 11.02.06, specific requirements for a variance to the buffer requirement in accordance with Sections 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the ULDC. If you are here for this particular item, I would be surprised if you were, but if you are, that will not be heard today. And we will have that advertised for future meetings. The first item on the agenda is under Public Safety. We have a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase medical-grade oxygen. Our presenter is Division Chief Brad Johnson of the Fire Department, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This morning, I'm here to present and hopefully get approved our medical-grade oxygen annual contract. This contract, in the past, has been with life gas. It was under the bid process through purchasing, and only one vendor submitted a proposal for that. As our recommendation, we go with life gas of Georgia.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid for medical-grade oxygen, and I'll entertain a motion.
Good, Chief.
A motion by Mr. Stame and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept the Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant for the heat program. Our presenter is Major Mark Ammerman of the Police Department, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning, and also Chief Nichols, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board. It's time to renew the heat grant again. We've had this grant for years and years. The Governor's Office actually told me personally that they're going to cut out this grant for Henry County. It's only because the guys do such a good job. The grant should have ran out years ago. But it's only because they do such a good job. Last year, they were recognized as the Task Force of the Year. We've had the Officer of the Year, we have Department of the Year. They do an outstanding job. Unfortunately, the grant does keep getting smaller. I guess bottom-line numbers, they're still going to fund 40% of the salaries for the sergeant, one officer. We'll have two in-kind officers that we'll have to pay 100% for. But bottom-line numbers are, we're going to receive $53,900 from the program from the state, and our local match will be $80,000.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution accepting the Governor's grant for the heat program at $53,900, and I'll entertain a motion.
Good.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman. We have a second by Mr. Stame, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to declare certain property as surplus and to approve disposal of said property, and that's Exhibit Number Three.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanted to preface this, what you're fixing to see, the presentation from Major Ammerman, that I personally know the two individuals that have coordinated and started this program, the Armor of God Program, Lieutenant Travis Yates, and also Lieutenant Clint Rec. I attended the National Academy with both of them, and they started this program. That's how I became aware of it. And I firmly support it, and hopefully y'all will go ahead and vote your approval for this. And I'm going to turn it over to Major Ammerman now.
All right, the Command Staff has determined that we have bulletproof vests that are expired, so we want to make them surplus. So we need the Board to approve that they will be surplus. The officers don't wear them. They're sitting back in the quartermaster collecting dust, not doing anybody any good. The second part of this is we need a vehicle to be able to get rid of these vests. Well, I believe we found this vehicle in the Armor of God Project that will allow us to get rid of these vests. They go to this project where they get refurbished and they get sent out to other police departments across the United States and even some parts of the world. Where officers that don't have vests, they'll have the opportunity to get one for nothing. And it will be no cost to the county whatsoever. It'll be no liability to us. The county has accepted vests before from churches here locally. Here's our opportunity to pay it again forward to somebody else that hasn't been as fortunate as we have. I do have a video I'd like to play. It's about the project.
Mobile Police Department is lending a helping hand to officers in need. The department is taking part in a program that reuses old bulletproof vests. Fox 10 News reporter Mike Rockwood has the story.
The Mobile Police Department takes time every year to make sure all of its field officers have body armor, but bulletproof vests like these typically expire within five years, making them useless to MPD.
Well, we didn't do much of anything with it, quite frankly. We wound up destroying them in some fashion, and that's just a waste of something that's of use to someone.
The vests are still useful because in some instances, they'll work, even though the warranty is out. So when Police Chief Philip Garrett heard about a project that gives these expired vests to officers with nothing, he decided to get involved.
This is an opportunity to put them to use, to send them to someone that needs the vest but can't afford to buy the new ones.
Now Chief Garrett says the plan is to donate many of these expired bulletproof vests for years to come.
We're going to look at, I think we've got about 50 right now that we can send. And what we'll do is, as they expire in the future, we'll just put them aside. We'll probably wait till we've got enough to make it worthwhile.
The body armor will go to officers not just in rural police departments, but all over the world. Chief Garrett says if these vests save just one life, it will be worth the effort.
Something's better than nothing. In our experience with these vests, even after the expiration date, they still work.
Reporting in Mobile, Mike Rockwood, Fox 10 News.
Mobile Police Force receives grant money to buy new vests on a regular basis. Chief Garrett says a new vest usually runs about $750.
Just one more short video. Hopefully, I'll explain a lot of questions.
165 used bulletproof vests belonging to the West Virginia State Police are getting a new lease on life. They're being refurbished to protect an officer's life who would otherwise go without because he can't afford one. 13 News Gil McLaughlin reports.
Many in the law enforcement community believe a bulletproof vest is just as valuable a piece of equipment as their gun, but some departments simply can't afford them.
Trimming the fat off of your budgets, sometimes equipment is some of the things that are cut. And, you know, for agencies that don't have a big budget anyway, I could see where a bulletproof vest would be cut from the, would be cut from the budget.
That's where the Armor of God Project comes in. And the West Virginia State Police has donated 165 vests to that effort. The program takes the vests, reconditions them, and gives them to officers who need them.
And I think it gives you a little bit of an edge, knowing that you do have a little bit more protection. And, I mean, you still go through the training and how you were trained.
To get rid of these used vests, the state could send them to a landfill. That raises environmental and cost concerns. Or they could send them to state surplus, but the problem there is, the vest could end up in the wrong hands.
Hopefully, if something happens to one of the officers that receives this vest, that maybe it might save their life as a result of what we did here over the last several months.
The program has already received one shipment of vests from the state police. More are expected to be sent in the future. With local news in South Charleston, Gil McLaughlin, 13 News.
To learn more about the Armor of God Project, just head to our website, wowktv.com, and click on Featured Links.
The only other thing I have to add, we also have a direct request from Cornelia Police Department in Georgia. They would like 12 of these vests that we are, that are expired too, and they're clear that they are expired.
Listen, it's my understanding that these vests sometimes go to the range and they get shot up down there, or I'm assuming that they go to the incinerator. I don't think we surplus our bulletproof vests or any of our police uniforms and things like that.
No, ma'am, we want to make sure that they don't fall into the wrong hands. And unfortunately, I've been on search warrants before in bad guys' homes where we found bulletproof vests. So I think donating the vest to this Armor of God Project, like I said, I know both the gentlemen that run these, they're both currently with police departments. They facilitate getting these vests to other agencies that need them, that can afford them. And just because, our pattern in practice is, is once the warranty on the vest, which is the five-year period as stated, expires, we don't use them anymore. We take them out of service. But that doesn't render them useless. We have shot them up at the range just to see if they still work. They do still work. And somebody that can't afford one, they would love to have it. And that's what we're trying to do here. And of course, they understand that the warranty has expired, so they're signing waivers of liability saying, "We understand that the warranty is no good anymore," and that "we would not be responsible for anything that did transpire."
Mr. Bowman, I believe that the last time I recall getting a donation for a vest came from Glen Haven Church, and I want to say that last time, it was about $30,000. But I don't think that's the total amount that's been collected for vests for our officers.
No, ma'am, actually, we've done, for vests and for our fire department, we had a drive for the oxygen mask and some other things that go for the fire department. We work pretty consistently with public safety on both sides of that. And yes, ma'am, it has been. Glen Haven's, we were doing the same thing in Decatur, when we were in Decatur. I mean, it's just important to the community that, you know, we want our officers to be safe. And it was an opportunity for us to do some things to help. And, you know, I know I'm bragging on my church, but I mean, I've been there since 1967, so I think I have a right to. But anyway, it's, I see this as a great program, an opportunity, like you said. I mean, even these vests, I mean, these vests are the ones that are still in warranty. You know, they're for a lot higher caliber weapons. You know, you get out there, you know, some of these guys with .32s and something like that, not going to penetrate those. And even, you said, even the bigger weapons won't do some. So I fully agree. I mean, if it saves one police officer's life so he can go home to his wife and kids, I'm all for it. I mean, I think it's the right thing to do.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
I have just a question. I'll ask the attorney about this. And, Madam Chairman, I know you had mentioned the fact of no liability. I want to reaffirm the fact of a whole harmless and that there's no liability to the county in this donation. Because many times, in my comment, is no good deed goes unpunished. And if you give somebody this and then someone were to get hurt with a vest, you know that the attorneys are going to search it back to its origin, which would be us. And just want to be sure that we are held harmless.
I'll work with the department to make certain that we get an acceptable agreement in place. We need to have something in writing executed by the recipients of these vests. And I will work with the department to make sure we get that.
Okay, that's, and I think it's a wonderful program. And I tell you, we just need to feel and look that our officers are fortunate enough to keep those warranty vests. There are others that don't have that, and we need to give back. Obviously, just like the church gave back to purchase it, the county has purchased equipment for the PD. To keep our officers as safe as possible, no question about that. And this is wonderful that you're able to give it to somebody less fortunate. So as long as we're not liable and held responsible for something that did happen, I have absolutely no problem.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution that is declaring these vests as surplus and also donating them to the Cornelia Police Department and the Armor of God Project, and I'll entertain a motion.
Good.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is under Purchasing. We have a resolution requesting award of a bid for janitorial services. Our presenter is Rod Gray, Purchasing Director, Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This appears to be the project that will not go away. The request of this resolution is to rescind previous Resolution 12-193, which approved the award for janitorial services to D&amp;B Janitorial Services of Fairburn, and re-award the project, which is an annual contract, to the Distinguished Group of Stockbridge, Georgia, the second lowest bidder with an overall cost of $59,340 per year. The original term of the contract is for one year, beginning on October 1st. We will move that date back in accordance with this meeting, most likely October 15th, and ending on October 15th, 2013, September 30th, 2013. By mutual agreement between Henry County and the vendor, the contract can be extended for two additional one-year increments with the contract termination date not to exceed September 30, 2015. The recommendation is to award this contract to the Distinguished Group of Stockbridge with the second lowest overall cost of $59,340 per year. Funding for these services is available in the General Fund and also in an unbudgeted revenue source realized from the sale of BOC-approved surplus vehicles. A budget amendment in the amount of $8,274 will be processed in accordance with the contract start date to cover the cost for these services.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holder?
Mr. Gray, what, if you're able to say this in public session, what happened with the first contract?
Yes, sir, I can say that in public session. We were, before we brought the original award, we were surprised at how low their cost was. So we checked references, we checked with them, we verified their cost. Everything checked out, or we would not have brought the recommendation. Also, in the bid process, we were clear that they would have bid on each facility on an à la carte basis, meaning bid on it as if you would only get one award, not economies of scale for everything. Well, this vendor claims that since we would not be awarding the admin building because we've hired full-time cleaning services for this building, that they wouldn't make any money off the contract. And it's clearly not what we indicated to them. They weren't going to receive the award, and so there was no other option other than to rescind. They weren't going to accept it. The day we, the day you offered it, they turned it down.
Would that vendor be prohibited from bidding on this in the future based on your experience with them during this process? It seemed like a waste of time, you know, even if they were...
That's certainly a possibility. I would feel more comfortable, before giving you a solid answer, discussing that with the county attorney. But it's certainly, there are, there would definitely be reservations about doing business with this vendor again. Unfortunately, their references were excellent. You know, I was surprised at this, so...
Well, that's what surprised me too, the fact that you explained to them that it was an à la carte basis. They were aware of that going in. And, you know, to decline to accept the contract as awarded by the Board, it's a waste of your time, it's a waste of our time, it's certainly a waste of our county attorney's time.
Yes, and in addition to that, when we did the facilities tour, we did tour this facility, we were standing right there. And I stressed to them, "We want a quote on this facility so we can have contract prices in case we need it, but we will not be awarding this facility." It was that clear, no uncertain terms.
Mr. Bowman?
This, Rod, this is, it's a question. I know that we have, the Sheriff's Department does some cleaning for us. Are we taking advantage of all of the opportunities we might have with the Sheriff's Department? I know that there's, I do know that there's certain requirements for who he's able to use as far as what they're in jail for, for whatever reason. Have we had an opportunity to see if there's any other possibilities for him? He does a great job doing it, and I really appreciate what he's doing. But I didn't know if we had some other opportunities where we might could save some money there.
We have looked into the other options, not just with the Sheriff's Department, but by using community service. And the challenge is, is that historically, this county has done the majority of the cleaning at night, where it's not intrusive to the business activities, the day-to-day activities. And quite frankly, there's certain areas within the county that do not feel comfortable having people with legal issues working. I mean, because they're supervised, but you'll have five people. It's general supervision, it's not one-on-one supervision. And so that has, that has been the challenge, certainly. But we've bridged the, we've bridged the gap between the contract that expired until this contract with community service. But my opinion is that's not a long-term solution.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Stame?
Do we know who the owner is of the Distinguished Group? Do we know who the owner is? Because it's a Stockbridge firm.
I'm sure we do. I do not know who the owner is right now. It's on the bid file. We require, you know, the ownership documents, the Secretary of State's seal. I can certainly provide you with that information. I do not have that in front of me right now.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution rescinding the other contract and awarding the bid to the Distinguished Group of Stockbridge, Georgia, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Stame, would you like that information?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, I'll get that to you. Is an email okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Social Services, we have a resolution requesting approval of the Henry County Transit Department Service Delivery Guide. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
Good morning. The Transit Department is requesting formal approval of our Service Delivery Guide as a policy statement for clarification and guidance for safe and effective means of providing transportation for the citizens of Henry County. There are several new things that have changed through the years that are included in this document, and we are requesting formal approval, as I said. But for example, new things, wheelchair securement policy. Definitions of a common wheelchair has changed. We're using now curb-to-curb service versus door-to-door. So there's been some changes that have been, that have occurred that we've needed to implement, and we've done this in this document. Would like to recognize the Washington Federal Transit Administration Office of Civil Rights. They provided a lot of regulatory input. And then the Community Transportation Association of America gave input for operational guidance for a viewpoint from our standpoint and also from the passenger's standpoint.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution approving Henry County Transit Department Service Delivery Guide, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Preston and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is under Communications. We have a resolution requesting approval of a contract, and I'm not going to try to pronounce this name, I'll let you do that for me. And our presenter is Julie Hoover-Arnstadt, our Communications Director, and that's Exhibit Number Six. Good morning.
Good morning. The company's name is Agio Affinity, and it is simply a discount card program that we would make available to county employees at no cost to the county or to the employees. It's similar to the fundraising-type discount cards that many of you may be familiar with, that schools sell, where it would be a discounted, available to any number of restaurants, nail salons, car maintenance, car wash, florists, any, any number of places. And as soon as the contract is signed, and the contract is merely saying that we will update employees as to the discounts that are being offered. Like I said, there's no cost to the county. We're just agreeing to send out a monthly update to all employees and put a link on our intranet website for employees so that they can find out about what discounts are currently available. And I'm sure new ones will be added monthly, which is why they want the monthly update sent out via email. And once that contract is signed, they would begin to start selling locally to those restaurants and other businesses, which is why they need the agreement, which is the guarantee that they have the customer base. They only offer this opportunity to organizations with more than 1,000 employees, which is why they're inviting Henry County into this. And this is just a perk for county employees, and I thought I would bring it before you to see if it would be something you would be interested in offering our employees.
Mr. Stame?
Ms. Wiley, have you had an opportunity to review this and see if we could actually do this and promote this from our channel too? Are we within the guidelines of doing that?
Are we promoting? I didn't realize we were promoting anything. I don't think we're promoting anything, other than the way we normally get emails, inter-office emails saying, you know, "Go buy this restaurant, they're offering, you know, 5% discount today." So I view this in the same vein, without any other active measures that we're taking. Am I right, Julie?
In my mind, it is the same. It's just an opportunity for, you know, government employees to get discounts en masse. In fact, it might be an opportunity to reduce the number of emails that they see from me regarding those discounts, because they would do it collectively through this site, potentially if these businesses choose to go through them. Companies would benefit potentially because it isn't just Henry County that has this. My understanding is the state of Georgia is also contracting with Agio to provide this perk to their employees as well. They make their money by the advertise, by going out and selling a business on making those offers available, which of course drives business at their location.
Mr. Preston?
The other question I have is, if they're going to start sending emails to our employees, is there an opt-out, like you see with most solicitations?
They don't send them. I send them once a month. And there is no opt-out. That is part of the contract, is that I'm obligated to send out a monthly email to all employees, letting them know what discounts, new discounts are available.
So they won't have a database of all of our employee email addresses?
No, they provide me with the information, and I send it out. And then there's a website and a mobile app that employees would have access to via a code so that they could find out at any time they wanted to what those discounts are.
Mr. Holder?
I know some time ago, I mentioned it to Butch Sanders, who was former county manager, about including in this list the retirees. Is this, is this option available to retirees?
Yes, we can certainly add them to the, to the list. I would just need to work with Tara on getting a way to contact them.
This was, this was brought as a request to me a couple of years ago from retirees that said, you know, we, in fact, it's when we were encouraging early retirements because of the economy. That, I guess my question is, did that ever come to fruition, that retirees can participate? I see this as no different from Gold's Gem or whoever offering county, county employees discounts for this or that or the other, along with other businesses here that do the same thing. This is just a concerted effort or a major movement. Do retirees currently benefit from programs such as this?
The only organized effort that we have is what I send out to all employees. And with them not being included in that database, they currently would not necessarily be made aware of those discounts. Whereas this, if we were to get a list of email addresses or provide the website address for the perks card so that retirees could go on there at any point in time and check what discounts, we absolutely could make it available to retirees.
I think that's important because in the last, what, four years, five years, we've had quite a few people to retire that have given this county many years of service. And I think it's, again, it's just a thank you for the years that they've given us. So I think they should be included. It's no cost to the county, so I think that they should be included in it too.
Well, yeah, and it's a time when retirees, you know, being on limited income, it also helped them. I did have one question, and I may have answered mine. Does, do any of our employees, would we have to fill out any personal information whatsoever to receive these cards?
No, no, we would, the employee goes on to the website and prints out the card. Once they makes it, once they make it available to us, they print out the card, they carry it in their wallet. We don't provide any personal information to Agio of each employee. They just know the number of employees that we have.
The reason for that, I had read perks will never sell or share any participating subscriber, employees' information to any third party. And that's why I was a little concerned if, if we had to give a lot of personal information out that some may not, you know, want to do that. But then they don't have to go on and download the card if they don't want to do that, I suppose, so...
Correct. My understanding, from talking to him over numerous conversations over the months that we've been working on this, is that we don't provide them information. They merely make the information available to us, and I have to forward it to the employees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to enter into a contract for the free discount card program for our employees, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to Technology Services, we have a resolution requesting authorization to purchase a UPS for the disaster recovery site for servers and network infrastructure. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Director of Technology Services, Exhibit Number Seven. Good morning.
Good morning. This is just a request for the purchase of an uninterruptible power supply. This is a battery backup for our disaster recovery site, where all of our backup site for all of our information, our servers are located. Our batteries that are backing up that current system are about six years old. In fact, the last time... In fact, the last time we had a severe thunderstorm that came through and knocked power out, it actually took all of our equipment down, and so we felt it fairly urgent to go ahead and replace that. We worked with the purchasing department, the technology services department specied out the equipment, worked with the purchasing department to get three bids, and the lowest bid is what we're recommending from Southern Utah Warehouse. Have you taken questions?
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution to award the bid, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to county manager, we have a resolution adopting the minimum standards and rules and regulations for Atlanta South Regional Airport. Our presenter, of course, is our county manager, exhibit number eight. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Have before you a resolution, as it says, to adopt the minimum standards, rules and regulations for Atlanta South Regional Airport. FAA not only recommends, but requires the adoption of rules and regulations and standards in order to ensure fair and objective access by operators in the performance of commercial services. And a side note, when we took the airport over from, purchased the airport from Clayton, they, we found there weren't any rules or regulations that we could find or anybody could give us, so basically, this is something that needed to get done. We went through a process with airports, who with their expertise, checking through their organizations and working with their attorneys, did a first blush agreement, and then they vetted it through FAA personnel and GDOT here to assure that this would be okay. So what you have before you is, is something that's needed at the airport, and at the same time, at this point, has been, as I said, vetted to be the items that should be covered in such rules and regulations. Any questions?
Mr. Preston?
How, is it possible to change these, these rules if there's some unintended consequences or other things that, you know, as we maybe have airport authorities in the future and other things, how hard is it to amend these, these rules?
I'd just bring it to the board, and the board obviously approve it, and then I'll run them over to the, or either prior to, I'll explain to GDOT or FAA both what they are, and should not be a problem. Obviously, we need to run the airport in the manner that we want to, and at the same time, follow the rules and regulations that required of us, so it should not be a problem.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the adoption of minimum standards and rules and regulations for Atlanta South Regional Airport, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Holmes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a management and consulting agreement regarding Atlanta South Regional Airport, and that's exhibit number nine.
Morning again. If I said to you I really wasn't wanting to be back up here on the same subject, I hope you'd understand I really don't, but at the September 4th meeting, vote was taken and approved three to two to approve the contract that was proposed by airports with one suggested change, which was to move the new paragraph 1303 from a date of January 31 to March 1st. I took that back to airport for their consideration and got back with them and, because they had thought it wouldn't be a problem. During that timeframe, when I got back with them, the airport manager who airports has put in there has requested relocation to another airport organization, and they have a place for him and are choosing to go ahead and honor that wish. Nothing has been, been done to this point. He's still there pending this meeting today, and I don't know where he's going, or we will work through what, whatever timeframe that is in talking with Ozzy Moore, the president of the company. Basically, what you have before you is the change in 1303 from January 31 to March 1st to give the new board the opportunity to vote during that 60-day period to either, to reject the contract at that time instead of the original 30, 31 days that were in the prior September 4th proposed agreement. There's also a paragraph that was added, or was amended, I should say, in number 701, and I've left it in the books here for you, deleting the verbiage that was originally in there, so you can see it. Obviously, that, those lined out words will be taken out, and I'll speak to that in just a second, and some additional language that's in there. Unfortunately, I don't have my copy, which is in red, which is the additional words, but the basic 7.01 just says that the airport is providing the county the opportunity to provide the general manager. At the present time, as I mentioned earlier, meetings, airport provides a airport manager and bills us backs for the salaries and benefits, so it's a net no-cost difference. It's just that we, according to this, have the opportunity to hire that general manager. They've added a paragraph 1304, and of course, there were changes in numbering by inserting that to other paragraphs that were 1304, et cetera. But basically, what that says is it gives airport the opportunity during the same time period of January 1 to March 30, March 1, to terminate the agreement if they have not appointed a general manager. Basically, it's an opportunity for them, in addition to the board between 1303 and 1304, to terminate the contract as well. So it's a sort of a mutual thing. The means by which they're providing this is that they would, if they do not appoint the general manager, they would give notice, and then the contract would be terminated at that point. So it's very similar to 1303 where the board does it. This is where they're doing it based on not putting in a general manager. And that's pretty much the gist of these two paragraphs that are being added. Other than that, everything else is the same. The only other issue, and I failed to consider this until I was sitting there this morning, and that is an effective date, and I did not get with the county attorney, and I apologize, but the effective date is a key that I guess I hadn't considered as to what this date should be and whether it would be today, if it could be backdated to the 7th, when the interim agreement expired, but I'd might as well bring that subject up rather than leave it open-ended. Again, I apologize, I didn't think of that sooner, but I was wrapped up in the getting the language done, so I don't know how that would be done.
I'll have to think about that a little bit.
Sorry for putting you on the-
That's okay, that's okay.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
Well, I, I, go ahead.
Mr. Preston?
Oh, I was, you know, I was just going to basically make a statement, is the fact that, you know, and I've talked to the county manager, so he knows my thoughts on it, is that I was hopeful that before we did any agreement, that we'd have an airport authority or some level of governance outside of us. I read the, the changes, it looks like it just provides more outs really for, for airports, but I didn't see enough to, to change my vote from the previous vote, and I just wanted that to be on record.
And to your point of the airport authority, I've, I've received documents from two airports at the present time that have airport authorities, their charter, if you would, and various other documents that they use to create their authority. I've got two more coming. I plan on taking a look at all of them, figuring out what may or may not make sense, and then working with the county attorney to figure out what type of an agreement would be best for Henry County. There will be various issues that I see, as already talking to some other airports and their use of an authority, that things I think that will have to be worked through before we do a final agreement. You know, simple things like how the members are going to be appointed, or where they're coming from and qualifications and a lot of things like that, but those are the things I'm taking a look at from other airports as to how they've established, and at the same time, give you a report as to how they're working.
And Mr. Bowman?
I, I just wanted to clarify one thing in that, if, if I understand this correctly, basically what's happening here is it gives airports the opportu, the same opportunity that we would have as the new board, they would have the same opportunity to say, well, you know, in that same 60 days, we want out also, you know, they want out and therefore reducing the possibilities of looking like that they've been basically terminated, basically. They, they could actually, if they feel like it's going in the wrong direction, they could terminate, which we didn't have that in the first one. Is that pretty close to the simple?
That's pretty close. What they basically did, and you're hitting the nail on the head, is they looked at it and said, you know, we've been in business, you know, 50, 70, 80 years, never been terminated from a contract, didn't feel that they've really done anything wrong, and basically said they sort of like have a mutual, you know, agreement to terminate as well with the new board. If they feel the new board is not going to continue the contract, then they have that opportunity to work with the board and say, we'll terminate the agreement prior to a vote, or however you want to look at it. So it's sort of a dual, yes, dual thing of who's taking the first shot.
It gives them the same right to opt out, to keep from being terminated. That's, that's the way I understood it, you know, the kind of simple language of it.
Yep.
The, the other thing into, and I, and I appreciate Mr. Preston's views on the airport authority. I have nothing against an authority. I, I've read some information that was given to me, and, you know, it actually made a fair amount of sense, but I feel like also that when, you know, in January or February, I mean, we got two months there, it, that could happen on the first day if the, if the new board, which, and I'm, I'm using that because I'm on the new board, and as Mr. Holder had stated in a couple of sessions, you know, we, just because we're voting to give them the same, just because I would vote to give them the same oppor, the same rights that we have, does not mean that the, the, the new board coming on can say, no, we want to go with an airport authority and that's the end of it. So I think that it's, it opened, I mean, that door's open, that, I, I don't want anybody to think that door's been closed simply by a statement that, you know, because one may be for it, because I'm not against it. I mean, I'm, I'm not against it, but I am for giving them the same right to opt out, to keep from being terminated based on the same thing that, that we would have with them. I think it's only fair. I, I know if I, in my business, I, I'd like to have the right to terminate, you know, without being in that same situation, so I just wanted to be sure that just this, you know, we, we talked about it a lot, and, and just the simple terminology for the people that are watching, and the people that will watch this on the internet, is, is that's, that's the only change, and the new board will certainly have the right to create an airport authority and say, we don't, we don't need airports. And I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm not saying that that's what happened, I'm just saying that that's, it's, it's out, it's out there. I mean, so in fairness to them, you know, that's, that's, I, I think it's, you know, the right thing to do, to give them the same opportunity that we have.
Just as a follow-up to that, again, part of how this came up, of course, is, if you recall at the last meeting, Chuck Kurtz from airport was here, obviously sat in the meeting, stood, stood up here and spoke, and he carried back to airport management, you know, what transpired in the three to two vote, and the possibility, whether it was strong or whatever, that this could happen, and that ensued into the conversations at their part, I guess, that said, you know, if, if it's going to go, we'd like to have an opportunity as well, so in fairness, that's what they came back with, so that's all.
Mr. Preston?
I just wanted to get, Latonya, if I could ask you a quick question. Under the current terms, if we added an airport authority, would we have to do a brand-new agreement, essentially terminate this and do a new contract, or is this allowed for us to add something in the future?
There is a provision in this proposal before you that allows the county to assign the contract to an authority, another governmental entity under our, under y'all's purview, so I think you will have that, I know you will have that ability to transfer it.
Okay, so you wouldn't have to do an all-new agreement?
No.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution that rescinds resolution number 12-194, and this new one will approve the new agreement with the reference changes, and the effective date will be the effective date of?
Well, I, I certainly don't recommend that we, that the board engage in the practice of retroactively approving contracts, but I think in this case, we have been in a no-contract status with airports since September 7. I'm not sure what, if any, financial implications arise from us, from the board, you know, going back to that date. I don't know that, Fran, I'm sorry, I can't make any comments on that.
Again, I can speak with them and just tell them that, again, based on that, I don't think they'll have a problem. The period in between fortunately has passed, and whatever might have been exposed, their concern, I'm sure, would be one of what about from the period till then till now, from an exposure standpoint, but since that period's over, nothing has happened and transpired from a liability standpoint, there's sort of been, without a contract, doing it, so...
So I, with that in mind, I, I wouldn't have any strong objections to a retroactive effective date of September 7.
Okay, with the effective date being today. Do I have a motion to approve that? Okay, we have a motion by Mr.?
The effective date today?
Well, the, the new agree, the new agreement with the new language in the, effective date of today.
I'd like to give the second district an opportunity to make the motion. I don't want to jump in there ahead of them.
I still, I mean, even with the airport authority, I, I still stand back to what Commissioner Holder and I talked about in the last meeting, is that I would prefer, I get nervous with any deal that says we have to do this now versus when we're only two months out, so I still, it's not my dri, my desire to, to make a motion to approve on this, on this at the moment. I'd prefer to defer this.
Okay, well, I make the motion, and I made the last one, and it was very interesting, so I made the motion that we approve this one, and that, as with the amended date situation.
You want it to be retroactive to September 7? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor?
Hold on, Buck, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Latonya, I just thought you just said we could make it effective today.
No, no, I said that I don't, wouldn't recommend that to be going to normal course. You can go either way, but my only hesitancy is I don't know what financial or legal liabilities, I haven't been presented with that. And, but Fran has said that he's working closely with the airport folks, he knows what's going out there every day, so, you know, I trust your assessment on that issue.
But there's really been small activity. We were covered through the race with the extension of the interim to the 7th, and since the 7th, really hasn't been a lot of activity, except the normal course of planes flying in and out, buying fuel, collecting the rents and things like that, and nothing has come to my attention at this point of any magnitude of concern.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and then a second by Mr. Holmes with the September 7th date. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries with Bowman, Holmes, Stamey, and Mathis in favor, Preston and Holder opposed. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes, and we're going to do these separately. We're going to do the July 2nd one first, and Mr. Bowman was not here for that meeting. If there are no additions to those minutes, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The next two minutes are June, are July 3rd and June the 18th. Are there any additions to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. No one signed up for public comment. Miss County Attorney, anything for public session?
No ma'am.
County Manager, anything further?
No ma'am.
For public, okay. Upcoming meetings and events, Monday, October the 15th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, October 16th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular meetings. Monday, November 5th at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, November 6th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, or land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Bowman is there second, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Motion carries five zero. [applause] Motion carries five zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned. [applause]